Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Show all council members are in attendance. Tonight, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just to note for the, for the public that the items on the consent agenda, if you want to go to the city website and look those up on the agenda, those are items 3C through 3G concerned setting public hearings for, for the issuance of general obligation bonds. And when you, when you add up the totals for, for all these proposals, they, they add up to somewhere between about 8.7 to 8.8 million dollars. And, and that's on top of the, of the bond debt that we, that we accepted for, for construction of the, the police headquarters. So I would encourage folks to go out and look at those items. And, and as soon as the agenda comes out for our next city council meeting to again, review those, those items and kind of acquire an understanding of, of what those mean for the city's financial future.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Tonight, we have two mayoral proclamations. The first one is designating October 9th through 15th as Fire Prevention Week. City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Council Bluffs. And fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas US fire departments responded to 369,500 fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And US home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, which would be the most recent data available, representing the majority, which is 84% of all US fire deaths. So 84% happened in homes. And one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms and, and the smoke alarms are not working. And three out of five home fire deaths result from fires and properties without smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And many Americans don't know how old the smoke alarms in their homes are or how often they need to be replaced. And all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. And whereas the age of a smoke alarm can determine, can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm. And Council Bluffs first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And finally, whereas Council Bluffs residents are responsive to public education measures and, and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't wait. Check the date. Replace smoke alarms every 10 years", effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of the manufacturer on the back of the alarm. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Council Bluffs. And encourage all residents to find out how old their smoke alarms are in their homes, to replace them if they're more than 10 years old, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the Council Bluffs Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week with the seal of the City of Council Bluffs. I do hereby proclaim, I don't know if anyone's here from the fire department. I have a second proclamation, which designates October 10th through the 14th of 2016 as City Week. City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and one of the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And city government is administered for and by the citizen and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas City Week Iowa is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Iowa that they can shape and influence the level of government which is closest to the people. And finally, whereas the Iowa League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different informal publications and projects. And City Week Iowa offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Iowa that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, do hereby proclaim October 10th through 14th as City Week Iowa in the City of Council Bluffs. And encourage all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities with the seal of the City of Council Bluffs. I do hereby proclaim. I'll take that one. And we'll move on to the public hearings. Tonight, we have one public hearing. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of ordinance 6280, which is amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning lots 1 through 6, block 6, Streets Edition, and the vacated alley adjacent from R2 to Family Residential District to R3, Low Density Multi-Family Residential District as defined in chapter 15.10 is proof of publication on file.
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? If you'd step to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi. My name is Tim Rolfo. I'm with Senior Housing Corporation of the Diocese of Des Moines. And my address is 601 Grand Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. So I'd like to first acknowledge the Community Development Department for its most capable assistants, Don Gross, Rose Brown, Brenda Carrico. And also would like to ask when it's appropriate about the rezoning ordinance for the third consideration, that that be waived. I have another, I'll say, item of request or discussion related to tax abatement. But I'm not sure when it's appropriate to talk about that.
No time better than right now.
Okay, thank you. So the Corpus Christi Parish, along with the assistance of Senior Housing Corp., set out to evaluate the potential for a development of an affordable housing project on a vacant parcel that's adjacent to the Holy Family Church. I'm joined here with three representatives of the parish, including Father Tom and Andy Heck and Kathleen. Thank you. So we, Senior Housing Corp. was established to assist parishes in an outreach to the community and parishioners to provide affordable senior housing to seniors and to others in the community through providing quality housing and an expansion of supply. So this is a section 42 light, stands for low-income housing tax credit program. And it's frankly, one of the few opportunities to provide a financially feasible scenario to develop smaller scale, affordable rental properties in existing neighborhoods or, or infill sites. The Christ the King Campus in Des Moines, Iowa, on the south side, did a first phase and then has done a second phase as well. The process is very competitive with 35 or more applications annually and 11 or 12 awards. And that's a fairly consistent ratio of the number of awards, a number of awards to the number of applications. So the awards provide development capital that then provides for affordable rent. And in fact, approximately 70% of development costs are ultimately funded through tax credit awards that are monetized through a syndication. So projects are scored based on a variety of factors that ultimately encourage quality, energy-efficient construction, handicap accessibility, appealing building characteristics, and environmentally friendly units. Currently, we do not have a competitive application. So my second point is that a significant variable in the point tally through the rules that are established by the Iowa Finance Authority is what's called local government contribution. The maximum number of points that are available under the QAP Qualified Allocation Plan is eight points. In our discussions with the Development Department, we have talked about having a four-year, 100% tax abatement for a multifamily. For us to maximize those points and have frankly, a more competitive application, a 10-year, 100% tax abatement would get us to that eight-point mark and make us a more competitive, more competitive application. So we're a nonprofit developer, working with parishes to try to take use of parish lands. And part of this is the ministry of reaching out to seniors and those with less assets.
And is there, before I forget to ask you what I want to ask you, I'm going to ask you now. You asked for 10 years. Is that 100% for 10 years? Is it, does it score just the same if you give 50% for 10 years? I mean, is it a dollar total, I guess, or?
Good question. It's a dollar total. For the size of our project, which ranges between 30 and 34 units, construction costs in excess of about $5 million. The total government local support needs to be about $280,000. So that would be 100% tax abatement for a 10-year period of time. I might add that this parcel is currently exempt from property taxes, pays no property taxes. So the 10-year abatement period was effectively established at a revenue stream that otherwise wouldn't come forward. If successful in receiving an award and closing on financing of the project, an affordable, attractive housing development would replace a vacant lot one block north of Broadway and it's in accordance with the city's development plans. Employment opportunities for construction and management of the property as well as service providers to the property would result, I mentioned, the construction costs in excess of $5 million. Also, and perhaps as importantly, affordable housing units are added to the housing stock in Western Council Bluffs. That would benefit seniors and workforce housing as well. We believe the location's very well-suited for this type of property with access to grocery stores, medical clinics, churches, parks, transportation. So our request is that the city consider a 10-year tax abatement to enhance the outlook for an award and an outlook for the development of a quality property that's, would benefit the folks that, who need that from an affordability perspective. With that, I'll stop and ask if there are questions.
Would that come to us formally later or how?
I would think it would have to come as a separate item.
Yeah, okay. So he should work with Rose and Don in submitting something to us for that request?
For the abatement, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
I wanted to thank you, sir, for the work that's being done by you and, and there by such important nonprofit work and through the Church Father and, and as a judge here as well. And I'd like to thank you for, it's, it's so important that, that we, we have places for people that are affordable and that, that truly help people in our community who need it. And, and so that, you know, telegraph my intentions, I'd be very supportive of a, of a tax abatement proposal. I, we give them on various projects. This one, in my view, seems entirely appropriate. Particularly, as you point out, it's currently, doesn't pay taxes in any event. And this is for a genuinely good cause. And so I would look as great favor on that. It would have to come as a formal proposal. We couldn't act on that this evening. I'm also inclined to agree with your request to waive third and, and to move this forward. Thank you for coming and, and for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I too just want to express my appreciation. Senior housing is definitely high on my agenda of things that we have to start looking at in Council Bluffs as our population starts aging. It's just so important to be able to provide living situations for people who can no longer care for their homes anymore. And we don't have that very available in our market for our middle income. If you're not quite wealthy, there's very little available to you. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate your efforts in this area. It's something we need a lot more of. So thank you.
Yeah, and as a point of clarification, that, that this will be a very senior-friendly type of project, but may not be exclusively restricted to seniors. And so it would benefit as well workforce housing, as it's sometimes referred to, as well.
Anything else? I'd encourage you to get ahold of Community Development as soon as possible. While we have a meeting tonight, the agenda gets prepared next week and I approve it a week from tomorrow. And so in order, I assume you have timelines, which is why you're asking for the third reading to be waived. And so that we can stay on those timelines.
Yes, sir.
The sooner you can contact them, the better.
Thank you. And thanks for our representatives from Corpus Christi as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, Madam Clerk.
Motion to waive. So you, please.
Yeah, motion to waive third.
Second.
And is there a discussion on the waiver? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 6281, establishing the Bluffs Northway Urban Revitalization Area Amendment within the City of Council Bluffs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
I'd like to make a motion to waive third on this one also.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Ordinance 6282, amending Title V sewer by amending Section 5.05.010. Definitions 5.10.040, specific pollutant limitations. 5.10.080, accidental discharge sludge control. 5.10.120, reporting requirements for industrial use.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
These really just keep us in continued compliance with our federal and particularly federal, but to a certain degree, state environmental obligations. So in that sense, frankly, we don't have any real local say in the matter. So for that reason, I will be suggesting we waive third.
I, I asked and was, was assured during the study session before the first reading that in looking at these changes, yes, they, they are required by the bureaucrats up above. And, and I, I asked whether or not there is going to be any marketable impact upon residents, upon small businesses, or even for that matter, industrial users. And, and the answer, coming back to that, was, was no appreciable impact known at this point. And so that, that could change at some point in the future for industrial users, depending on what new, what new business might be looking at coming in. But for right now, these look like pro forma changes.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Resolution 16-258, officially designating the city council meeting dates for the City of Council Bluffs during the 2017 calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 16-259, adopting the corridor master plan in connection with the reconstruction of West Broadway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying.
I would just like to, I would like to say a couple things about this plan. A lot of these business owners here tonight are, are here because myself or someone else contacted them and showed them this West Broadway reconstruction final, oh, like it says, final corridor master, master plan in connection with the West Broadway reconstruction. The reason I did that is because I wanted to make sure businesses knew what the plan or the goal was. And during the study session, you said, and I don't know if you knew it was me or who you knew was doing it.
No, I, somebody said, a guy called up and said, "Someone came to our door today and..."
So today, you said, you thought it would be a disservice to take this and show up and down.
No, I, I...
Well, either way.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a disservice before you had the information, the whole information, to go up and down.
Nonetheless, I, I thought it was my responsibility, being up here. Again, I was assured today that letters, emails, phone calls, and even door knocking on West Broadway businesses had been done. Definitely not saying that hasn't been done. But nonetheless, a bunch of the businesses that I went into had not seen this document or had not been privy to some of the information that was on there. So my responsibility, sitting up here, was to come to some of you businesses and show you this and say, "This is our plan. This is our goal." And I'm not comfortable with some of them. Being a small business owner on Broadway, I wouldn't be comfortable with some of them, as some of you aren't. You know, I, I have a, a strong disagreement with, with Nate in particular that, you know, I don't think there should be medians at all on Broadway. That, that's my opinion. Nate strongly disagrees. And that's, that's fine. We can definitely disagree on that. But I don't think, I don't think that there should be medians at all. And I do think that it's my responsibility as a small business owner and as sitting in this chair to come out and show you guys. Whether you've seen it or not, I could still, the vote was tonight for this plan. And it's my responsibility to touch base with you and before I vote on something like this, in my opinion. And that, that's why I did this morning and this afternoon what I did up and down Broadway.
I, I don't begr, if I may, I don't begrudge you reaching out to constituents and, and speaking with them. I, I think that's quite appropriate to speak with people. I think it's important for people to, to know that this is just an overall plan. It's not set in stone. It's basically a roadmap, if you will, of how we're thinking conceptually. That is, big picture, if you're looking at it from 10,000 feet above, how we'd like to see the road pattern eventually be as we reconstruct Broadway for the first complete reconstruction since 1949, 1950. A lot of things have changed since 1949, of course. And one of the things that we have to look at, this gives us an opportunity, number one, for the first time in the history of our city, to actually have real storm sewers in the western commercial corridor of our community. It serves no, no business or no resident of our community that oftentimes the street's underwater. And I believe we all agree about that.
Absolutely.
We agree about the, the functioning parts of the road. Where we have some disagreement is about some of the aesthetics, some of the things that I, I would agree are not absolutely necessary for the road to function as a road. But where the disagreement is, is I, I think that while we're there tearing up the road and rebuilding it, I think this would be an appropriate time to give the west end of our community some of the same improvements and look through use of private money or other money other than city tax dollars. So we're making requests to foundations and other grant organizations. So if, if we don't get the money, it's, we're not going to, I agree, we don't ask you and your general property taxes to, to pay for these improvements. But we have these corridor improvements throughout our community, particularly on the eastern sides of our community and in the center. We don't have a whole lot in our west. And so when I talk to a lot of neighborhood folks in, in the west end, particularly neighborhood leaders, they ask, "What about us? Why don't we get these aesthetic improvements? Why don't we get the, the plantings or the trees? Why is it the east or the center?" And, and I think as part of the job, we're, we're all at large. And that is, we all get elected by the whole city. We don't have districts. And, and one of the great advantages of that is we can all focus on different things other than just territory. We don't have to worry about east versus west or north versus south, which we can focus on different aspects. And the piece I, I like to focus on is the neighborhood piece. And, and I look at it as, you know, we have wide swaths, two and a half miles roughly of, of concrete or asphalt, where we have a center turn lane, the entire length of it. If you look at best practice, that is, what do most cities do? They, they don't have a left turn lane, the entire length of a business corridor for a lot of reasons. Number one, it's horribly unsafe. You have to remember that that road was designed originally for horses. So that's why there's so many turns in and out of businesses. It didn't much matter when you were driving wagons. We didn't even require you to be on the right-hand side of the road at the time, because it didn't really matter. And then when vehicles came in, I looked up the history. Depending on which year you look at, West Broadway had a speed limit of 10 or 15 miles an hour. And there was considerable fighting at the time that many people thought it was way too fast. Why did any human being need to go 10 or 15 miles an hour? And, and I bring that up because things change. We've entered a different time. Vehicles are wider, literally wider, literally bigger, and we go much faster. And having so many left turns and having, some businesses having three or four entrances into them leads to a situation where it is nearly impossible to make safe turns into businesses, because there's so many options, so many vehicles going in and out, different directions, that there's no way to, to, to effectively make that safe. And add into that fact that there's really no designated way for pedestrians. And we have a lot of people, including schoolchildren, in that area, walking. And so we have a situation in which people are making turns eight different directions, people walking across the street. And here's a chance, when we rebuild the road, to try to make that a bit safer. And so part of it will be, the city staff, I believe, has done a very good job of, of reaching out by mail, by email, even knocking on doors in the most affected areas. This is going to be a year-by-year project. The general taxpayer, the cheapest option for them would have been to close the street down all at once, do all the construction at once, and get it done. But we all recognize, I think, that there's no way, even though that would be much quicker overall, to get the street done. Instead of taking years, it could be done in under a year, probably, you'd all go out of business, who have businesses on that street. And the residents in that area would be completely inconvenient. So it's not possible. So one of the things we're doing is staging it over several years, where there's about two blocks a year and the traffic will remain flowing both directions the whole time. Also, as part of this with medians, there were some proponents, we were always in the minority, I have to say, but, but there, we thought strongly about it, that we wanted to median the whole distance, except for the four or five main intersections. For aesthetics, partly because the rest of the community gets it, why does the west end does not? But also partly because it makes things safer by making people take left turns at areas where it actually be safe to do it. As part of the public input process during the last couple of years of this, of reaching out to, to residents and business owners, there was a lot of talk about how that would be too inconvenient for existing businesses. And including, so we scaled back the medians. We've, we've removed trees entirely. I was very sad to see that go. But we've decided to go to much smaller plantings, bushes and flowers, basically. And part of this was the whole compromise process. So when the streets redone, the, for example, that's going to alter in some cases, the grade, that is, how high the street is next to a business. So those improvements necessary to get into your business, we've decided to make as a part of the project. Now, we could have made the business owners pay for that, because it benefits your private ground. But as part of the compromise, the difficulty this was going to be to your business, we have to balance all the taxpayers' interest in using that road and paying for it with the difficulties you'll specially experience. And as part of the compromise was that we would pay for certain things we're not really obligated necessarily to pay for. And as part of it, we would reduce the medians, reduce the trees. So I just want people to know the whole history, because if you push now for no medians whatsoever and all these things, you're basically, and you have every right to do so, let me say, you're upending the deal, the compromise deal, where certain things that we don't necessarily have to pay for, we've agreed to do, to pay for, and certain other parts of the deal that are compromised. So if, if you get rid of the parts that will, that many people seek, particularly residents of the west end, then that'll open, call into question whether you're going to have to pay for other stuff. Because you can't, in a, in a deal like this, you can't get 100... Because you can't, in a in a deal like this, you can't get 100% of what you want. I'm certainly not getting 100% of what I believe. None of us are. And I appreciate you could push for 100%. But if you push for no medians whatsoever, then you're going to be paying a lot more, I think. I will push for the general taxpayer not to subsidize the improvements to your property right to connect to it. If you do not agree to help the general taxpayer with the aesthetics and the safety, because they're paying the lion's share of this improvement. So everybody has to give something. And so in the end, I I I think we've had a compromise over several years. I think it's a fair one. Nobody's going to be completely pleased with it. I'm not. I'm sure you're not. That's why I think it's right. And so I I just want folks to understand the history of it. It's going to be inconvenient, but we're doing our best to make it as least inconvenient as possible, bearing in mind that everybody's having to pay for it.
Before we cue you guys up, I'm gonna do one, two things, I guess. One, answer Roger's question. I wasn't pleased that proposed driveway closures, which have not been negotiated with the property owner, not had been talked about, where property owners were told, we're closing your drive. I don't think that's an accurate statement. And I think that people are concerned, because they'd heard that. I talked to Mad Hatter and was concerned about what he told me, and so, through the wonders of technology, the people that know me know, I've only had a phone for like a year or so, bear with me. So I sent a text to the city engineer. I said, the owner of Mad Hatter at 34th and Broadway is here, saying that no one's followed up with him. He said, we spoke to him, said we would get back and didn't. He's going to stand up tonight and say, we didn't listen to what the property owner had to say, and that we'll be closing one of his accesses on the 34th Street. So the city engineer texted me back, Midwest Right Away, which is the Right Away Acquisition Company, hasn't approached any of the owners yet. Again, we aren't approving a final plan tonight. Property owners will be spoken to, and nothing is finalized on phase one, including his drives. I said, thanks. And he said, it hasn't even been two weeks since we met with him, so I I don't know. But that's that's the, I want you to know that I wasn't blowing you off, so.
Well, I just wanted an opportunity to, I took a good bit of time away from my work to be at the meetings, for the stakeholder meetings that everyone was invited to attend. So I did meet with a lot of the property owners at those meetings. I took a good bit of time to be at the public forums, where the business owners and the neighbors were all invited to be there, so that I could hear the feedback from the owners and from the neighbors and the people that live in the west end. And I know that I've got, the last meeting I went to was just two weeks ago, with the stakeholder meetings, and was shown that they had not negotiated the driveways, that they were talking about how much feedback they had gotten and how many emails and the responses to those emails. So, you know, I I guess I was really disappointed to find out today that so many people said that they weren't aware, because there was a lot of effort put into making sure everybody was aware. It was on the front page of the newspaper several times. Mailings went out, door to door visits were made, Facebook page was put up, city website was put up. Roger put it on his Facebook four weeks ago, and I tracked, there was very little input on that. You know, it's disappointing when I see how much time I take away from my business to make sure that I'm involved, to make sure that I know what people are talking about. So I know what's bothering them, and I know what their concerns are. And then, a year into it, on the very last night when we're going to vote on it, is when I find out that so many people weren't aware that these plans were in place. And I guess I can't even explain how shocked I am, because I don't know what else a city can do. I don't know how else a city government can get that word out. You know, when you go door to door, send posted mail, not email, hold forums, repeated forums, hold stakeholder meetings, inviting businesses to be a part of the solution. And a lot of, there were several businesses that showed up, and several changes made based on their input. I I guess that I'm just dumbfounded, and I'm not sure how to get this information out better than what we're doing. But we're, obviously, we're still not getting a hold of all of the people. I don't know how, I don't know how else to do it. But I would tell you this also, a lot of what maybe wasn't shared with you is that one of the things that we've talked about through this entire process is that when it's done, Avenue A would be made a two way street. That makes a really big difference to me, because I know, right now, I don't left out. I don't have time for that. I drive all day, and I plan my routes on right turns. So I ride in, ride out everywhere I go. But it's also kind of a hassle, you know, that I can't go back and make the block on A, if I would need to head back east. So I understand that maybe there were people that weren't aware of that, that that's going to make a difference for you, if you're going to be in a left in, left out, or, yeah, left in, left out only, that that street will go two way. So that is important information I would like you to all have, as you're making your assessments on what we're doing and what these plans look like.
Another another thing that, a lot of this was done before I was on council, obviously, some of it not. But this master plan is a goal, and I know that when we raised questions about some other master plans for, whether that's the riverfront or the mid-America center area, people, when we raised questions, people were like, whoa, you guys voted for the master plan on this? So this is a goal. I mean, I've had that come back to us. So that's another reason why this is, you know what I mean? It's a goal, it's a master plan. And then when we raised questions later on, it's like, well, you guys voted for the master plan. You know this was going to happen. And I've seen that happen, and I know you guys have too.
That's what I told you today. Make sure you look at it and understand it, because people are going to ask you questions about it.
So so that's another concern of mine. I mean, that that's happened to me.
But but I would also say, too, that we've all had this master plan for, what, five weeks now?
Roughly.
Yeah. And and so, you know, at the time that we received this master plan, you asked it to get put out even more broadly, and then you put it on your Facebook, which was great. But again, so over a five week period of time, no concerns, and no, nothing was brought up that, hey, you know what? I want to meet with you, I would like to see if we can make these changes. None of that happened. It was today, that now today, we find out that business people didn't know about it, business people weren't happy about it. I mean, this has literally been in the public eye for months on end, and then in our possession to take out to the business people for five weeks. I, it's always just so surprising that we end up at the 11th hour before we know that there are these concerns.
And that's happened to us on the other way, too. We've gotten things at the 11.
I'm just talking about this one, so.
I'm tired of that story.
Yeah.
Jeff, I did, I did mention your issue, because Sharon says that people didn't bring it forward. Jeff brought it forward three or four months ago.
I haven't.
Matt brought it forward today. Same kind of issue. And and today in the study session, I talked about the fact that, to me, impulse purchases and and I consider gas and in car washes somewhat impulse purposes. You're driving down the street, and, you know, my car looks like it needs washed, oop, I can't turn left to get into it. The the tax company, I think, is a destination point. You're going to get your taxes done, you can get there. The dentist on 27th or the bank on 27th are destination points. But but I think people that have an impulse, in in Atherton's case, someone's wanting to get gas, and I'm going east, and it's difficult to turn left and go in, so I'll just keep on going until I get down to Quick Shop. I fully comprehend what you're saying there.
And I think the good point is that this truly is a goal. I mean, it's our initial starting point, and we talked to Matt Cox today about it. He said, as we start to go through the phases, he does plan to go and meet with each owner, you know, when it's your chance to talk and see, is it realistic to possibly, you know, I know closing entrance was one thing that came up, or even the medians. I mean, they really want to work with businesses to get the best outcome we can, so that we as the city can make it, you know, beautify it, make it more safe, all those things, but also to be as accommodating as possible. And I mean, they, I know that's their plan, and I know that's been their plan all along. We just weren't even at that point yet, as far as the city was concerned, because they needed first to have a starting point to decide, where do we even start?
I'm sorry, please.
No, I was just going to say, to to that point, we were provided some assurances by Public Works that during these discussions with individual businesses, that if they couldn't come to an agreement, if there seemed as though that there was a contentious ma- matter still unresolved, that that would be coming back to us to to help resolve. And and I think that was a very important point, because we we realize that when these big plans are being put together, there's there's a lot of entities being impacted by this. And there's there's a lot to consider, and and a lot of it is not going to be contentious, but there surely will be elements of that. And the fact that they they intend to come back to us to resolve those points of contention is very important to the ultimate success of of this endeavor. And and along that same line, that that I've known that since this process has has begun a long time ago, that there was, that there has been a lot of public input back, not only by businesses, but also private citizens. And some of the, some of the elements that I thought were frankly ridiculously expensive and other parts just ridiculous have come out, and that that this has undergone some improvement. And will probably need to undergo some improvement further. But at least at this point, I'm I'm satisfied that with the process, though, that that Public Works is has an open ear and is is willing to work with businesses and with with stakeholders and that that have have a right to come in and speak up and and make their positions heard. So I I thank all of you for taking time as business owners to to come in and and make your opinions heard. I mean, that's that's what it's all about. So good on, good on you for for doing that, because this is your livelihood that's that's at stake. So we need to be sensitive to that.
So now, rules of order, which we don't have to explain to Bruce, because he's a regular attendee, but for anyone else who would like to address the council in regards to this matters, not a public hearing, public hearings get 10 minutes each individual. Since it's not a public hearing, the policy is five minutes each individual. And so if you would like to address the council, you're more than welcome to do that. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and and when you get to the microphone, please give us your name and address for the record, so that that we have that captured, so.
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I'd like to address the council on this project. And I like to say, this is a project that the city has never had the opportunity to do, because before, it was always a state project. And you have the opportunity to put your input in that you've never had to before. Because if it was a state, you would have probably had one, two meetings, they would have decided what they were going to do and not negotiated with you. And it's an opportunity that I say that I hope, the city, I think, is trying to do something that is completely different than what the state would have done for you. That was one of the things I wanted to bring up. Before all the the state would let us do is put decorative pavement on the side. That's all I wanted to mention.
Jeff Ballinger, 12606 Greystone Court. First of all, Matt, thank you for getting back to me tonight, even just letting me know.
I didn't get back to you, but I knew why you called.
Better late than never. I'm the owner of Jeff's Washing Glow Limited, which is a holding company for Gorilla Car Wash. Been in business since 1991. Before that, Ballinger Automotive Business, my grandfather started that in 1926. So our family's had a business in this community for 90 years. So we've got deep roots in the community. One of the things that my grandfather always told me when we were at Bishop's Cafeteria eating every Sunday, was people in the community were very reasonable. And I I do believe that. I think people in this community are very reasonable. I think the proposal that we're talking about here, and Sharon, I, how would you like to be addressed, by the way? Councilman White, Councilwoman White?
Sharon's fine.
Okay. Sharon, I was one of the ones guilty as charged. I didn't get to very many of these meetings. I owned two businesses down in the Permian Basin in Texas, so I did not get to many meetings. And also, my father, my 80 year old father, said that the the plan was a touch of class, and I think he was talking a little bit more about the aesthetics than putting a median in front of his son's business. But be that as it may, my take on this project is, when you're putting a median in front of a small business, what you're doing is you're actually devaluing that business by 50% in essence. And those of you that have run on a business agenda, whether it's been in a chamber hearing or anywhere else, understand that. I've been through this in West Omaha, 156 West Center. I've been through it with my business partner, Todd Archer, on 33rd and O Street in Lincoln. The reality is, when you take away half of your traffic count, you're devaluing a business by 50%. And I really don't feel that it's the council's role to be picking winners and losers as far as small businesses concerned. Mr. Watson, I agree with a lot of what you said. It's really important that we don't pit one side of town against the other. I went to AL. I mean, I'm tired of the the ALTJ. I mean, I own businesses all over, and and the west side of town, the south side of town, the north side of town, and the east side of town. So I want the whole community to do well. But I just think it's really, really important that we do not have government step in. I mean, if you look at it from a homeowner's standpoint, how many homeowners in this community would allow their houses to be cut in half in value? You'd you'd have a line all the way out the, out the door here, all the way down, probably all the way down to West Broadway. And that, in essence, is what you're doing to a small businessman, when you take away half their traffic count. So that's that's all I wanted to visit with you about. Yes, we're for safety. Yes, we're for beautification. I don't think anybody in here would argue that. But we're also for survival. And if you think about it, most of these things that you're talking about, Mr. Watson, are paid for by the people in this room. Small business is the economic engine of America. And although it's not as sexy as some of the bigger businesses, and we don't have the titles or the bank accounts, we still work very, very hard and employ a lot of people in this community that pay a lot of taxes. So I hope you'll keep that in mind. Thank you for your flexibility on these medians, median cuts. I I would, I would just recommend that you really, really listen to your constituents on this, especially the the business community, because it's very, very important to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Orr. I live at 2556 Avenue L. I live, I own Dave's Complete Auto Service on the corner of 17th and Broadway. I live and work, obviously, in the west end. I have not gotten a lot of information on this plan. I did see some stuff in the newspaper. I have been aware of a couple of meetings, which I was not able to make it to. I go to work at 8 o'clock in the morning. Thursday nights, I'm there till 10, 11 o'clock at night, trying to get stuff done. Got to keep the lights on. You guys are planning on putting a median directly in front of my building. As it sits right now, I have people calling me, asking where I'm at, on the corner of 17th and Broadway, next to McDonald's. Should be plenty easy enough for people to get to. I still get a second phone call sometimes. So if I have to tell people, you know, well, if you're going down Broadway and you're going west, you know, you have to turn at 16th Street, go to Second Avenue, come up 17th, and there on the right, or, you know, however it works out, that's more confusing than even telling them to, you know, turn left right after McDonald's. That's a big problem. Also, in your plan, you have a lot of brick. We've had brick on Broadway for, I don't know how many years now. They peel it up every year, replace parts of it, weeds grow through it. Half the time, it doesn't look good. It looks good when it's first done for a few months, then the snowplows come through, and it looks terrible. The other part of the median, you're planning on putting small bushes, whatever you're going to put down the center of that. You have that on Avenue G, where they built the nice new bridge. I drove by there on my way here. There's literally bushes growing into the street. So that doesn't really look real great either. I'm also all for making the Broadway look better, but it also has to function. Getting across Broadway is not fun now, when you're trying to get across there with a median in there, where you have to go, you know, so many blocks out of the way to get around and wait for even more traffic, then you already have to. It's going to be a mess of, you know, unless you have stoplights at every intersection where you can go across, then you're going to have a line of traffic trying to get across. Half the people aren't going to make it. You're going to have people setting out a stop sign, just trying to shotgun across four lanes of traffic where they can't see part of it, because there's a median in the way. Um. That's all I want to say.
Thank you so much.
Could I mention that about the brick, because that is a concern a lot, a lot of people have raised. A lot of the brick that had been used in our street projects is sidewalk brick. In effect, in my opinion, looking at it, having some experience with that sort of thing, it it wasn't meant for streets. And so that, you know, with this plan, they they've learned, they've learned quite a valuable lesson of putting in actual street brick. And a good example of of the type of brick we're looking at would be what Omaha has done at Tenth and, is it? Capital? Yeah. Tenth and Capital, which has held up for over a decade now. That's real street brick as opposed to sidewalk brick. And obviously, you can't have cars and trucks going over sidewalk brick and expect it to last. And we all know it it doesn't. So we're going to use correct brick for those decorative segments. So that lesson has been learned.
Thank you. Talking about back of curb sidewalk, though.
I I think it's still going to be a better, a better quality brick. Frankly, what was used, part of part of the difficulty, all of these these projects above and beyond just the the essential, this is what makes the street work, get funded by third-party sources often, so not your tax money through property tax. And oftentimes, it's we're at the, you know, you're at the call of whoever donates it. If somebody says, I'll give you all this brick, but it's got to be X kind. Well, it's tough to go to a donor and say, gosh, we'd prefer something else. If somebody's going to give it to you, generally, your options are, do you want it or do you not? But but the important thing is, is we're trying our best to get better quality brick, but also bear in mind that even for the ones that aren't that good a quality, you didn't pay a dime for it. And you won't, even on the good stuff.
Well, I think I think we Yeah, we we learned an important lesson, I think, on in front of your business is an embarrassment to the city of Council Bluffs. I've been beating that drum for six or seven years. It's a trip and fall hazard. You notice we've gone in and scraped all that out and put concrete in in the interim. But when they were going to re-brick Broadway, they they did a little different installation process. What they did before is put sand and then just put the brick in it. And so if somebody drove over the top, it pushed it down and caused some heave ho. And then weeds grew up between the bricks. Corrosives got between the bricks. The new section they've done, which went about as far as Hy-Vee, I think, was they poured concrete and then put a tacky tar substance and laid those bricks. They seem to be holding up better. They're going to use a better quality brick than what they used that fell apart. And Nate's right, the Iowa West Foundation is paying for it. But putting that concrete base and then the tar really inhibited the weeds growing up and and seems to be standing up better. So it is paid for by the Iowa West Foundation. When, last time they did it, I asked them to do colored stamped concrete, thought that was a better alternative. They said, if you want colored stamped concrete, put it in yourself. If you want bricks, we'll put it in. So.
Hi, my name is David Drake. I'm a lifelong resident of Council Bluffs. I reside at twenty-nine oh nine Sixth Avenue in the West End. I am the owner of Metro Pond Alone, which is located at thirty-eleven West Broadway. I'm the co-owner of the building at thirty-eleven West Broadway Metro Pond is currently housing in. We have been in business for thirteen years. Metro Pond employees, myself, two full-time employees, and some part-time employees. We've always strived to keep the appearance of our property clean and tidy. We are one of the few businesses on Broadway that actually spray the weeds that overgrow the sidewalk and the red pavers.
Thank you.
The red pavers we were just discussing were put in years ago to help with beautification. Over time, these were ruined by salt and have needed to be replaced. You can drive down Broadway today and see the city hasn't done a very good job keeping this area clean of salt and debris.
I'm with you so far.
I'm sorry. I just got it wrote down. Weeds have overgrown in many of the areas that have the pavers. People don't spray the weeds. The West Broadway Corridor Plan Project Overview, as it says on the website, states West Broadway Avenue is the primary east-west commercial, commercial corridor through Council Bluffs and is critical to the city's economic vitality. Please explain to me how hurting businesses along that stretch of road can in any way benefit the city's economy. When it comes to the proposed islands, I have a question on how the location for each of the islands was decided upon. Who made the decisions and what criteria was used? If the islands are going to be put down Broadway, then why not everywhere? Wouldn't it be fair to all businesses if the islands went straight down Broadway and there were no exceptions? It appears that they're being used to force some of us as possible unwanted businesses out of business. If you look, said it would not only hurt my business by cutting off easy access, but would also devalue the property as no one would want to purchase my business property without easy access. This just appears to be another way the city to come in and force me out and gain possession of my property. They have also marked that one of the two curb cuts I have be eliminated, again, making it harder for people to gain access to my business. This island will also go past the corner of Thirtieth Street. So from basically Twenty-Ninth all the way to Thirty-first, eliminate any ability to people to turn there and come through the alley to my business. So now I'll have to go two blocks out of the way instead of one block out of the way. The island will excuse me. They also show planting trees. I don't know how accurate the tree designation areas are, but the trees that they show on the planting literally are on top of my sign. So I don't know how well that would work.
We won't be planting.
Okay.
That was one of the compromises.
I've heard someone say that the islands were for safety. If that's the case, then why restrict turning left into my business, but not other businesses? There's businesses on Broadway that are much busier and have much more people turning left into them than my businesses and many of the people here, such as Walgreens, Hy-Vee, et cetera. How many years has Broadway had the turning lanes? And how many accidents have actually occurred because of the use of the turning lane? I know you spoke of that, but my question is, has it been that detrimental as versus any other part of the city as far as turning?
It's been twice. It's twice the normal, so that you know, twice.
At the original meeting I attended, which I did attend in twenty fifteen, the three properties on my block, the car wash, my property and the car lot, were marked as possible city acquisitions. They had a tag on them because of the empty lot behind us that was left after Bungie was tore down, making it a large property for someone else to do, to build on. Now, looking at the final plan, I see my block, along with the Bungie property, is all marked blue as a priority. Again, making me think the city has plans to run myself and the other businesses out to take over, to use the Bungie property and our businesses. If the proposal for the islands down Broadway in front of my business and the closing of one of the two entrances are closed, what amount of compensation will I, as a business owner, get for lost revenue? And also, what amount of compensation will I get for devaluation of property? Is it something I have to seek an attorney for? The master plan was never mailed out to me. I I was, I went through four back surgeries and I was in and out of the hospital for over a year. I missed ten months of work. So I didn't see a lot of what
Master plan wasn't mailed to anybody.
I would think that would have been the most important thing to have mailed out to the business owners and say, this is our master plan. This is what we were going to look at. I think that would have been something that should have been done.
There were public hearings that that you said you attended one of them.
I attended the first one. I said I
Where they had master plans, there's where they had the master plan and then there the cities.
The master plan I attended, they were just talking about all the possibilities.
And we changed a lot of things based on the very concerns you raise, sir.
The problem with mailing out the master plan is this, is that people are misinterpreting. So your property is not in blue because it's being designated anything. The key at the top of the master plan clearly states that edge enhancements needed. So what they
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about if you look on the website, there is at the very end of one of the plans, there are some properties that say priority properties.
Well, we have some priority intersections. We have, you know, all the keys for the master plan.
It wasn't just that.
If you're talking about, if you're talking about
It's one, it was a seventy-two, it was a seventy-two-page corridor. It was a seventy-two-page corridor.
Okay, so that's separate from the West Broadway for what we're talking about tonight, is that right? Because I would tell you that your blue property really is about, you said something about the trees and I want you to know.
That's what this is. This is why I'm talking about the blue, the blue area.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the blue area on here.
Sixty-eight of implementations.
Okay, well, I want to let you know, one, we're not putting in any trees. So any trees
That was a compromise.
Any symbols that you see that indicate trees, those are the areas that now, if you were to build your business today there, if it was a vacant lot, you would be required under the overlay to put in a ten-foot buffer landscaping. So what we're doing is we're telling business owners, look, this is already going to be tore up because we're going all the way to back sidewalk. And if you're going to do it, now's the time to do it. And so we've also reached out. We're trying to find grant monies to do matches on this for any business that wants to. But you're not going to be required to do it.
I have a question. Mr. Watson said public funds are being used.
We're talking about your entrances, the driveways, I think is what that
Yes. That's part of the compromise.
Iowa West was funding the
That's brickwork. That's the enhancements.
Okay.
So the brickwork.
But then Mr. Watson
So if you want to keep the compromise, yes.
So you basically threatened all of us business owners very clearly
That's not a threat.
That said, oh, yes, it was a threat. I can't believe that he can take it.
It's a promise that the general taxpayer is
It was a promise by you
Yes, sir.
Which I would take as a threat, that you said if if we didn't agree on the medians, you were going to make us pay for all the other improvements.
That's what I promised when I, when I
But that's what you said.
Yes, sir. When I said, when I, when I ran, I said, I always look at the city as a whole. How it impacts you is important, but it's also important to remember that disproportionately, these improvements will benefit your business and disproportionately, they're paid for by other people. So I made a promise to those other people, particularly the residents of the West End, that we would, the reason why you have all these left turns is that area of town, that street was forgotten for the last sixty-six years. Six, yes, sixty-six years, that area of town. We put money elsewhere into improvements and we did not a thing to improve your street.
Well, I I just
And now we're, now we're doing it. But see, this, this is part of a compromise. I'm saying, what I'm saying is that you overturn the apple cart as to the pieces you don't like, the pieces you do like, what, there's, it's not reasonable to expect that you'll get a hundred percent of what you want. It's just not reasonable. I'm not going to get a hundred percent of what I want.
You you said if we didn't like the medians
Yeah.
That you're going to make us pay for
I'm saying that if if you don't agree to the parts that other people wanted to see, which were very significantly watered down to address many of your concerns, not all of them. I'll be fair, not all of them. It didn't clearly. And and you've got legitimate concerns. I'm just saying that if you insist on having a hundred percent your way, you won't get it because nobody gets that in government. We, it's it's a compromise and everybody has to give some. We gave a lot on the medians. There were other things you got. For example, on these improvements, you're not required to do all of these massive improvements that new businesses are required to do. We could make you do them, but we're not. That's a major compromise to you. This trees have all disappeared. Much of the medians have disappeared. So the general taxpayer is made lots of changes to help you. The city's reaching out to try to do as many of these as cooperative as po- cooperatively as possible and trying to find other people to help you pay for it or to pay for it entirely. Now, the the alternative we could do, we could just do it. Like Mr. Kelly had mentioned, the state would just say, we're going to do it. We're trying, going out of our way to try to be very cooperative and to find it so you don't even have to pay for it. And we're staging the street so that it doesn't, it impacts your business less than if we did it a heck of a lot cheaper way for the general taxpayer, if we just did huge segments or the whole thing at once. But that wouldn't be fair to your business. So the general taxpayer is probably going to be paying about twice what it would normally cost if they did it in a way that was the cheapest way to do it, which is all at once. So in other words, a lot of compromises are being done to your benefit. A lot of things are to your detriment, too. But what I'm saying is, is you have to accept that you're not going to get a hundred percent of what you want because nobody does. And if, all I'm saying, I'm just making the commonsensical obligation, observation that if you insist on removing entirely what other people want, they may not be willing, and in fact, they've told me they're not, to pay for the other parts you do like.
Okay, well, I'm not asking for entirety, just the medians.
Well, that's a big deal to many people and that's one of the things I ran on and I'm going to keep my promise.
That's, that's my opinion.
Just to understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you. And and obviously, this is a council decision. There are five opinions and so. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Eichmann. I reside at seven-seven-thirty South one fifty-ninth in Omaha. But we have two significant businesses here in in Council Bluffs, Jimmy John's Restaurants. The one that we're concerned about, obviously, would be on Sixteenth. You know, I've listened to everybody and I really appreciate you guys willing to to listen and to and that all the changes you've made. I think removing the trees was was one of the things that I was really happy to see because us being a newer building, we fell under, we couldn't fall under the grandfather clause, so we have to put in a monument sign. So we lost a lot of visibility with that sign anyway because it's literally right in front of another sign. Traveling east is hard to see. Tonight, I I went through it again just to to see it again at night before the meeting. And unless you're on it, you don't see it. Now, we lose the Seventeenth Street corner with the median. So then we would therefore, hopefully, somebody can see us at Eighteenth Street, which is, looks like that's the the first opportunity to turn north. Or you go past us and you have to wrap back around through the neighborhood on A Street. And and I I think that the concern, yeah, is the medians. And I've heard everybody say, you know, if it's not good for one, it should be good for everybody or not at all. Okay, well, I understand that. We're not going to do that. But I I do think that as we get closer to the overpass, you lose opportunities to turn. And Mary, it was great listening to you talk about impulse businesses. We're obviously an impulse business, you know, we thrive on that one dollar. We can convince you to buy that cookie, you know. So it's really important for us to not lose the traffic traveling east, whether they make that loop back around or buy from another business that's quicker because they know access to us is difficult. And and that's what we really would like to see is is more opportunities on those left turn lanes. Everybody said that, so I'll just reiterate that. But it's it's hard for us to determine that a customer will see us drive past us, turn left, come around the loop. I'm glad to see that. It's a two-way street now on A Street. That'll be, that'll be really nice. However, the the concern is on Seventeenth that we won't have that opportunity there. And and then also, I had, the the question I had, I guess, is the two blocks a year? Explain, so obviously, if if it's only two blocks a year, it's going to be
No, it's actually
I think I misspoke.
It's ten, ten thousand linear, it's about two-point-two miles, which is about ten thousand linear feet. And we intend to do about two thousand, give or take, depending on where the street falls. Two thousand per year. We want to start in April and button it up by November so that the street is fully accessible during the winter time. And then we'd start again so that, again, to minimize the impact of the businesses. We intend to keep one lane west and one lane east open at all times. How that works as far as people turning left in your case.
There's going to be a significant backup at that point, which we
Bear in mind, that does, you know, in essence, double the cost to the general taxpayer to do that. It makes sense and I support it. But people need to realize we, the taxpayers are making a major concession there in keeping all the businesses open both directions the whole time. And I think that's unprecedented. We were trying to find other examples in the state of a project this large, and I can't find one where both sides have kept open the entire time.
Sure. No, yeah, I mean, obviously, I I reside in Omaha, so I deal with construction on a significant basis, too, with that. But it's just, that's, that's again, where we, you know, we have that concern. And then I I guess sixty-five percent of our business is done through drive-through. I mean, that's, you know, and and our bottom line is, you know, around, every business is different, but, you know, we can't afford fifteen percent loss. And we will literally go under with fifteen percent loss. And with most of our business drive-by business, you know, it's it's a tough concern to think what happens. You know, we have a freestanding building. We didn't go into an existing building. It's, it wasn't cheap to do that. And it wasn't that long ago that we built that building. So it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money to think about revenue-wise. And and I know that everybody has, you know, we generate tax revenue. Yeah, we've got employees. We've got property taxes. But what what concessions would the city be willing to Yeah, we've got employees, we've got property taxes, but what, what concessions would the city be willing to help us get through this construction phase? Is there going to be any opportunity for property tax reimbursements, things like that to, to help us through construction phases?
We barely have the money to actually rebuild the road. We have enough money to do that during the construction phase. And I'm very clear about this. It's go, it's not going to be easy and it is going to impact your bu, your businesses. There is no way that we can do a project this massive without it hurting your business. We, there's only one way to rebuild a street and that's to rebuild the street. And, you know, we looked at, at those stakeholder meetings. We looked at, do you, you know, can you keep these lanes open, these lanes open? Could you do the center lanes? How would be the best way to do it? And we decided the best way to do it is to keep traffic going both ways the whole time and do our best to keep access into your businesses. But it's not going to be easy and it's, people are going to be upset and there's no way around that. But I can tell you right now that there's no potential that the city is going to be able to afford to reimburse property owners for any reductions in business. And I also, you have Jimmy John's locations in Omaha, don't you?
We have several, yeah.
Okay, and, and most, I, I actually frequent your business in Omaha a lot because I drive for my job. So this is what I would say. I would say it, I'd have to guess almost the majority of the Jimmy Johns I go to in the metro are ride-in, ride-outs. So it's not unusual for your business to be located in areas where there are medians, there are limited access, there's ride-in only, ride-out only, because I go to them a lot. And I know that it's frustrating and I know that it's not easy. But I also know that those businesses, I wait in line when I go. So I know that, you know, it, it's not easy, but I also know it's not going to kill your business because I, I frequent your business a lot in the metro. So I, I cannot see the city being able to afford to reimburse you during reconstruction.
I, I appreciate what you said. That's, that's, and you're right, but a lot of those were also planned on where the ride-in is where the traffic flow is. If we were on the south side of the road you write, the traffic flow is there and it would be convenient for the ride-in. But this, this isn't, and, and with us and not having a, 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 a north access on Seventeenth, you have to go on A Street regardless, even if you turn off early.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that being a two-way will make a difference for your business because I know that that has got to be a first.
And that will help. I'll give you that. I didn't know until this meeting that that was going to be a two-way, so that will definitely.
I hope so.
I don't think a lot of people seem to know that and about, about, and the, the other.
Unless it's not in here and I just got to reading it right.
It was not disclosed.
Okay, that's why I didn't.
No, and the, the, the other, the other thing to remember is part of the difficulty is, is if, if we could, if, if nothing were there and we could redo the street over, which of course is not reality, what we could do, or there was more room in front of the businesses, and again, it was a nineteenth-century street grid, so there's very little frontage to begin with. Ideally, we, the, the public space should be wider, if there were space, which there isn't. And ideally, there would be trees or more landscaping on the sides. Now, what we could do instead of medians is take people's property or require them to put plantings in the front of their businesses, thereby blocking their signage. But as part of these meetings and as, and I think common sense, would say that due to the narrow width of that corridor, the other alternative of beautifying it, putting it in the middle so that the business owners' signs are not blocked and the trees, which again, I, I, it was a major concession. I didn't want to see them go, but people made great arguments and we let them go so that people could see the signs on either side and you won't have to take care of them. They're taken care of, not at the business owner's expense. Whereas if they were on your property, obviously, it would be your expense. So we, we've done what we believe to be best based on a lot of input at a lot of meetings at trying to make things safer and more aesthetically pleasing, yet still have the least amount of impact on the businesses. And there are going to be some, yeah, I, I can't deny it.
No way.
Every project we do, it reminds me of when we, when we change, when we fix roads in residential areas. People love the idea of a new road coming in until we are starting to build it. Because then they have to walk, in the winter, it stinks. You know, you have to walk to get to your car and there are difficulties. And I realize with the business, you have the added complication of the payroll and the taxes you pay. But this, this area of town's been neglected, this street, for sixty-six years. And so it, it's got to be done. The storm sewers have got to be done. And if we can get someone else to pay to beautify it up a bit. Now, is there something to do with the medians? Again, tonight's just a plan, the overarching plan. Is there something we can do to adjust them if people put significant facts and were able to do it? Yeah, I think, at least speaking for myself, open to the ideas. But, but the idea of keeping two and a half miles of, of a turn lane, many cases in which you'd get a ticket if a cop were standing at that intersection because it's, wouldn't be legal to make a left there. But we make it seem like it is, even when it's often not legal. And pedestrians crossing in the middle of blocks, which is illegal. I mean, it's, it's stupid also, but plenty of people do it and, and the median would cut down on that. Yes, people, a lot of people have talked about having to walk around. Well, yes, then they'd have to follow the law of crossing at intersections. But with the businesses, please know that we, we want to work, but part of it's got to be, what, what are we trying to do to help businesses and what are the businesses doing to try to help the general too? And, and so it, it's a two-way street, I guess.
We can't, we can't raise our prices to make up for the loss in business. I'm just getting at that as.
No, I appreciate that.
And, and I know you, you're, everybody recognizes that, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
There's going to be a breaking point and I hope that the construction phases go on schedule.
I, I, I think you'll find that they will. And also, also you'll find that people will generally seek out and go to businesses that, that, we're keeping them open, that they want to go. Again, it seems to become a commercial. But I, I go to both of your locations, a fair amount in this community, among others. And, and I do, it is, it is a bit difficult. I, the direction I go, I have to turn around, but I do it because I want to go to your place. And I, and I think a lot of people are like that because they'll recognize the quality of your brand, just like a lot of the other businesses. I really think people will, will make an effort as long as we don't make it too difficult. And let's continue the conversation.
I'll, I'll stop, but thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Well, and one other thing I want you to know is it was brought to the council to at least consider, you know, were we open to having early completion bonuses? Because we know that those type of incentives tend to work. And I think that, that, when we talked about it that day, we were all like, yeah, do what you got to do to get this done. We want to inconvenience not just the businesses, but the, you know, traffic that drives on Broadway as little as possible. So, I, yeah, I want to make sure you knew that, but we're definitely looking at everything we can do to make sure it gets done on time or faster.
Incentives or maybe even penalties for, for late.
Oh, that, there's definitely penalties for late.
The full side of it, but give them a, give them a market incentive. Use the power of the market so that they're quicker, yeah.
And before I put you on deck, just in full disclosure to everybody, I was talking to Matt Atherton before the meeting. One of his concerns is that he makes his business look good by putting a monument sign down at the Atherton Gas Station. So they have fuel prices on, and his concern is that if you're going east, you won't be able to see his signage with the pricing on it. So just want to let you know that. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Stephanie Party. I live at twenty-five fifty-sixth Avenue L. And I work part-time at Dave's Complete Auto Service. We opened about three years ago and since then, we have seen many businesses on Broadway leave. We currently rent the building that we are in, but we would love to buy a building on Broadway. So I guess my big question is, what would that mean in our future? If we bought the building that we were in, there's no space there for beautifications in the front. Or if we bought a different building, that could mean significant financial hardships for us.
That, that's why we didn't go with doing it, requiring it in front of the business and instead doing it at the median. So you wouldn't have to pay for it and the general taxpayer wouldn't have to pay for it.
I'm saying going forward in the future, we currently rent.
Sure.
From Ted Baker.
Sure.
But moving forward in the future, we would be looking to buy either that building or possibly another building.
It's my understanding that unless you're building a new building, I don't know that you would have to do. You know, and in those areas like your building, you're right, there's literally the building, the sidewalk, the curb. But there are some other options for businesses where there just isn't enough right-of-way. There was some decorative fencing. In your location, I'm not even sure that would work because there's nothing there. But certainly, part of the plan did look at those areas where, you know, even if we gave you, you know, gave you some money to do it, there's nowhere to do it, so.
So I guess part of my concern also is with the new median, we already have a ton of empty businesses sitting on Broadway, a bunch. So I guess I don't know how you propose to get new businesses into these empty buildings, especially when the taxes aren't really that small to begin with.
Well, I would tell you, we have a turn lane all the way down Broadway right now. So if there's empty businesses now, obviously, having a turn lane, the length of Broadway doesn't make businesses go in there, right? So as soon as Raising Canes knew that this was going on, on Broadway, that was one of the things they said, brought them to that location. And if you look at that particular intersection, there's a lot of beautification that happened on that intersection. So we know.
Well, I'm sure there will be a turning lane on that intersection.
There's, there's going to be turning lanes, you know, throughout. It's just that there'll be things to break it up. But what I'm saying is, is that businesses aren't locating on Broadway now. We have to do something differently. And starting with building a street that doesn't have a big hump in the middle and has storm sewers. And doing that will help. Beautifying it, we know brings business. We know that businesses will consider locating if they feel like a community has taken the time to beautify themselves and to be proud of them. So, you know, as far as what we're going to do to put businesses into some of those buildings, everyone is a different story. Some of them are owned by people that aren't interested. Some of them, you know, are not great locations for any type of fast food or the things that tend to locate along there. So, you know, you hope that the investments made by the city and the taxpayers will draw the businesses like Raising Canes and that they will see those improvements as something that will help their businesses.
So I guess another question I have is going forward, I don't know if you've driven even on Broadway. A lot of times it does not, where they have that median. It doesn't look real great a lot. It's not kept up a lot on Avenue G. The downtown streetscape doesn't have as much grass and stuff like that, so it does look a lot nicer. Do you guys have plans going forward to, for more upkeep?
I tell you that.
From getting dilapidated?
Just kind of the background is the medians at all the street improvements in Council Bluffs until now are done by the Iowa West Foundation. They spend over half a million dollars a year. They're not maintained by the city at all. Iowa West maintains those because it now has become a half a million dollar cost to them. They're not willing to do it anymore. So the city would be responsible for the upkeep of any medians that are on Broadway. Roger asked the question as to what that will cost. It's in the neighborhood of between eight and nine thousand dollars. That is based on medians that are maintained by Iowa West and getting that information based on medians that the city maintains that were there before Iowa West took over. And then based on a bid out to a, a company, and I hate to mention a company because I'm not sure which one it is, but there are multiple landscaping companies and said, median of this width, how much we charge this a linear foot? And so we just did the math, but it would be about an eight thousand to nine thousand dollar annual cost to maintain those.
And, and if I could be very, very frank in, in helping answer your question about, we, yeah, we do have a lot of vacancies on West Broadway. Partly, when I, when I talk to business site selectors in, in the metro area, they tell me, well, it looks like your town doesn't care about the West End, so why would I want to, why would I want to locate in a town that doesn't care? First, first of all, our property tax has been twice, you know, if you could go across the river. But, so when I talk to businesses that, that particularly have locations in West Omaha or even have locations in eastern Council Bluffs or more suburban eastern Council Bluffs, they won't go there because it looks like we don't care. And if we put back a nineteen-fifty street without any improvements and in the rest of the town, in the east and the center, we put back beautiful improvements, which we continue to do without much opposition, strangely enough, it's going to look like we don't care. So when I talk, so when I talk to them, why won't you locate there? Well, because it, it, it looks bad. We don't want our business to be in a place that looks bad. I don't think that's a fair statement to make about West Broadway, but that's what they tell me, they think. And they're the ones that aren't locating there. So.
I don't think a median would really make or break whether it looks nice if it's, if it's reconstructed.
Well, ideally, again, having five lanes of pure concrete for two and a half miles is a mid-twentieth-century idea. And if you look at particularly the newer businesses coming into being and the newer generations, they don't want to be located in a place that looks like nineteen-fifty for a lot of reasons. It, it just, it looks like, it ju, it's just not a place that many businesses and their philosophies of how they, they want to act and the people they want to draw would go. Think of most young people. I, I used to be young once. I'm not terribly young anymore. But to the extent I still am in some sense of the word, I want to go someplace that's happening, that people are wanting to go to hang out. I, I, I have options to spend my money. And I'm not going to go to a place that's just one big giant piece of concrete. If I've got options where other places have places to sit, there are nice things to look at. And that's the reason why lots of things gravitate towards our eastern edge because we put the investment in there for, on those beautifications. What I'm suggesting is we've done a lot the last couple of years to right that balance, to get rid of that silly, stupid historical divide that still some ways exists. And one of the best things we can do is say, you know, West End, you are a front door. You matter just as much, so we're going to put these nice things in for you too. If we, I, I, it's, it's just difficult for me to understand why we think that people on the east edge of town can somehow manage to get around the medians, but that people in the west part of town can't. And I think both can't.
There's not a long stretch of businesses side to side.
To, to my great regret, I lost, this is part of the compromise, the medians are much, much shorter than they used to be, much shorter. I encourage you to go look at the plan. And again, it's an overarching plan, so it can still change based on input. But they're much, much, it, it was never one solid strip, but it was much closer to that in fairness to the people against it. It was much closer to that than it is now. And it's gotten much, much shorter. Does it still impact some businesses negatively? Yes, it does. And so the question becomes, look, if we're going to, we don't have enough room to put it on the sides and we're not going to make the private business owners do it, we've decided, so you're welcome. But how are we going to still improve it? How are we going to get something there that the east edge gets and the west never gets? And so the only place to put it is the part we already own in the middle where it'll do the least impact possible. And there'll still be lots of turn lanes. But I'd encourage you to be part of the process because if, if we just put back five lanes of concrete, the, i, i, it, it just tells people that we're stuck in nineteen-fifty for that part of town. And I think you're going to continue, you're not going to get additional businesses in the future. And I have nothing against used car lots and fast food restaurants, but no street will survive long-term and thrive if all it's got is one or two things. I think if you ask most businesses, other areas of town, take the Hundred Block, we need more non-bars there, for example. And the bar establishment owners will tell you this, because that diversification of business gets different people, different ages, all their family involved. If we stick with five lanes of concrete, we're just going to have more fast food and used cars and have nothing against those. But if that's all we've got, that area will never take off like the east edge has. And I don't think that's right. That's just my thought though.
I guess I don't understand what you're saying because the east edge doesn't have any car lots. It just has the fast food.
It has car lots towards the south, south does. I guess it'd be more south than east.
Not where they've beautified.
We are, we are doing actually a fair amount as the railroad tracks leave. I think you'll see some beautification because the railroad tracks in front of the Manawha Power Center, sometimes called Wally World perhaps, that whole area, I say that because most people seem to know it by that name. But the Manawha Power Center loses its tracks in front of it. Those all go within the next year, year and a half, if I'm not mistaken. And I think you'll see some significant beautifications in those areas. And right now, a lot of that area still has open ditch, doesn't have real storm sewers. That's changing too. So it's, it's, it's moving towards the other parts of town that have traditionally not have, had as much infrastructure improvement and deserve it. We've been doing a lot around Manawha right now, for example.
Well, have you noticed how close all the businesses are? You're doing projects that are built for businesses that are spaced further apart.
Well, that's, I agree with you that we have to be very mindful of, of not trying to do a suburban-scale development in an urban. And you're preaching to the choir with me on that one so that you know. I'm a great fan in making sure that we, when we plan things, we don't try to put in suburban things in urban areas. Because first of all, it looks crappy and makes it look like we don't know what we're doing. And we've, we've done a few, actually a fair number of those projects over the last couple of decades, in my view, that are, are great structures but are completely misplaced in their design. And I agree with you, so I'll keep pushing for us to do an urban scale because that, that's also the wave of the future as you look to millennials and retiring baby boomers. They don't want suburbs in the city. I, I'm totally with you.
Before you get started, if you don't mind, Nate, I know you and I think completely different on this.
We do.
But, you know, you say the West End. But, you know, you say the West End never gets, you know, what the East End gets.
Well, I think that's true historically.
This is the West End and they're not, they don't want this. That's how I see it.
Well, the residential neighborhoods tell me differently. I appreciate, a lot of the commercial businesses disagree. But the residents tell me they do. They're tired of not getting things the east gets. And they've got a point, and they've got a point.
But again, it doesn't affect them.
Well, they're, well, they're paying property taxes just as much.
But I'm just saying, to me, the, the, the West End, the West End that it's gonna affect, I know it, property taxes, I realize that, but the West End businesses that are gonna be adversely affected or, and also have some benefits, I agree.
I think they're gonna have quite a few politics. A new street, new aesthetics, not on their dime, yeah.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But when you say the West End never gets it.
I think that's true. We haven't rebuilt that road in 66 years.
These people are the West End, though. I'm just, I know they're not representing all the West End.
No, I know.
A good portion of them right here are saying, and that's the way I see it.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I think when you look in the east end, we, I, I, I guarantee you the streets in the east end won't go 66 years without being rebuilt. It will never happen.
And I'm not saying we, it needs rebuilt. I totally agree with you on that.
But five, five lanes of cement is, is 1950, and this ain't 1950.
And I understand what you're.
I'm so glad it's not 1950 in so many senses.
There were a lot of people at the public forum that wanted it, though.
I say there's a lot of businesses that are in favor.
We got a protocol here and that's to let the person at the podium speak. So sir, if you give us a name and address for it.
Caleb Morris, 3634 Avenue C. Is this a precursor to buying up blocks and building up larger businesses?
No.
This is not a precursor? Okay, I mean, it does seem with what he was talking about and with when I talked to an economic advisor you guys hired years ago, that that was gonna be a plan.
We, we do have a plan on the bungee, the, the former sites along First Avenue as to rebuilding in homes and resi- affordable housing. And by affordable, I mean middle class, good middle class housing for folks. And to help put back in a transportation line of some kind, either a street at First Avenue. I'm pushing for dedicated bike or other things for the wave of the future. But that's still to be decided. Yeah, that's what we're talking about when you hear that.
That's real nice. Speaking from a personal West End.
Yeah.
We want stop signs, okay? We don't have stop signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Everywhere. Okay, I had a call and request, thank you for approving it. There's accidents everywhere. Our friends or family are getting hurt.
You're right.
Okay, we have crime out that wazoo. We have a police force that tells us that, you know, hey, we got more important stuff to handle and then, you know, we're not good enough for these businesses. This is basically what you're saying. We're not the type of class of people for these businesses that you're trying to attract.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that your area of town has been neglected and these businesses don't come because we take the money and put it elsewhere so that they don't want to come to your part of town.
So is the plan?
You deserve to have these businesses in your.
To use the $30 million, let it sit for 10 million till it goes to waste again and then beg for another $30 million?
No. But it all depends on who you elect. It, it depends. That's why it's very important to vote into the future. None of us are gonna be here for decades. I hope not, I'm not. As you elect people to be in these chairs, you, you elect people that keep those priorities in place.
Anybody else?
Chad Brown, 24371 Richfield Loop. I agree with most everything these, these gentlemen are saying regarding the access. Matt, you alluded to the impulse buy. Forty percent of my business comes from retail traffic.
That guy's out there, I think.
Right, exactly. I don't get out there when my waiver calls is sick because it doesn't work. It, it is a big piece of our business, so I'm all for re-beautification of West Broadway. I like some of the concepts that are involved, but placing medians so you can plant trees and flowers may not be the best solution.
No trees, by the way. We got rid of those. Yep, yep, just sorry, I don't mean to do that.
It may make more sense financially for the small business owner to do a revitalization of their front door per se along the sidewalk. If I lose 50% of my business, but it costs me $30,000 to plant flowers or whatever beautification it is, that's a heck of a lot better than losing $200,000 a year in revenue.
We thought, we talked about that. There seemed to be strong reluctance to us making the business owners improve their lots with these requirements rather than doing it on public space. It just seemed like there was strong, a lot of people wanted to voluntarily do it, but for us to force you to do it, there seemed to be strong reluctance. If, if, if everybody would agree, we're gonna do that to the, to the city standards, you know, I, speaking for myself, I'd reconsider the median, but I just don't think we're gonna get there.
Mr. Brown, what's the address of your business?
Yeah, there isn't.
2125 West Broadway. There's no median in front of you.
No, no, I understand. I'm speaking on behalf. The real purpose I'm here, Roger didn't come by the office today, but someone did and brought it to my attention that there was gonna be the possibility of shared entrances with my entrance possibly being closed. I didn't attend every meeting that was available for public input. I did attend meeting down TJ where I thought the master plan was the master plan. There can be little tweaks here and there as we move forward, but at that time, there were no shared entrances, at least identified. I guess my question is, when did that occur? And secondly, how is that gonna be handled when you have property owners that may not get along?
Very fair question. Hasn't happened yet and it'd be something where the city staff would reach out. There are instances where traffic wise, I think we'd all agree as a general proposition, when you're wanting cars, if you don't want that street to revert to 25 miles an hour, and I doubt anybody does, you, you can't have as many curb cuts so close to each other. There's a reason why the interstate can go so fast. It's because you don't have all those interruptions of people pulling on except at very clear lanes where they get, you know, half a mile to get up to the speed, you know, that, that, that traffic's supposed to be going. But, so there are, so does it make sense to have so many curb cuts on that street when they were designed in the age of Model Ts? Probably not.
Oh, I'm not questioning if it makes sense or not.
It was gonna be a cooperative project where the city was gonna say, you know what? In this instance, maybe business owner A and B, it might make sense. Will you consider doing this? And if you'd work with us, we might even find a way to get that cost, not at your expense, so that it can be safer. You can have a new street built to 2019 or 2022, whatever year it would be, standards, not at your cost or maybe a cost sharing that, I'm not making promises. It's, these are just proposals at this point. But something so that you would get something that would improve your access and improve the public safety and hopefully as much of the possible, not on your dime. But it'd be, but we're trying to do that as a voluntary thing where we'd work with people. We're not trying to force anybody to do those things.
These were recommendations and on the mess.
Well, see, that's my, that's something I hadn't seen before and then.
That's new, based on input.
Relevant, and thank you, Roger, for sending out, you know.
And the reason they haven't.
It's based on input from people since the plan first came out.
And they told us today, the reason they had not come around with us yet is because first they wanted, this is just the start. They wanted to know if we would even approve it yet. Then they are gonna come as they start to go down the phases. They'll come to you and it's not, this is a must. It's, is this something you're willing to do? Or in some instances where there's not a business there anymore, then that's a time when they would go ahead.
But what if it's something we're not willing to do? I guess, is there a?
And you won't have to do it.
Then you won't have to do it with what we were, or it's something.
The concern is that it would eliminate half the parking and, you know, to, to do this in my instance.
Well, it wouldn't make sense in all cases, but sometimes some businesses may have, I'll make up just an example. Let's say somebody had three or four curb cuts and right next door, so the buildings, as, as the lady had mentioned, we're in an urban environment, so the building could be, you know, five feet away, 10 feet away, might have two entrances too. Does it really make sense to have five entrances within 100 yards? Maybe not. Maybe sometimes it would, depending on the nature of the business and where the layout. But where it doesn't make sense, this would be a great opportunity where everybody could work together, trying to find someone else to pay for it, to, to upgrade it to modern standards. But yeah, voluntary, voluntary. And we're trying to find other people to pay for it. So we're trying our best to make this as, as least costly to, to folks as possible. We really are trying.
Sure. Voluntary is a good word.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Jim? I know you're itching to get up, so I wanted to get you here.
Jim Kaiser, I live at 23118 McPherson in Council Bluffs. And I wanted to, to bring up a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Roger for sending that information out. You know, I haven't really paid very much attention to this, but I have a good client that's being directly affected by this. So I thought I'd come up and just take a moment and speak with you about that. But first of all, Sharon, I wanted to bring up something to you. You mentioned about Jimmy John's, that many of their locations already have right in, right out.
Yeah.
But I think that, that you can find out if you met with them, that they made those business decisions about going to that location when it already was right in, right out.
And I appreciated that information, yeah.
What we're doing here is changing it. The other thing that was brought up, you mentioned about Raising Canes, and they're in a unique location where their spot, they actually will have both directions in and out because the medium doesn't go to their business. But that's where I have the rub is it does affect my client who's just two doors down. You know, we have right next to them is Krispy Kreme, which will be cut off by the medium and then China Walk, which is be cut off even more by that. And fast food.
I'm sorry, could I ask you who your client is? I'm sorry, I don't know. China Walk?
The Gao family.
Oh, okay, thank, thank, I'm sorry, just so I understand.
That's Bill Gao.
Thank you.
Anyway, they're, that's a fast food business and, and I, you think that fast food on West Broadway is a very positive, good thing. It generates a lot of money. They pay a huge amount of taxes in their business locations here in town. And they would be directly impacted because essentially half of their traffic would disappear. And so they would be definitely impacted by that. Now, Mr. Ballinger, who I've known for many years and is a very astute businessman, made a point. And that is that when you cut your traffic down by half, you're cutting your revenue down by half. And I've been in commercial real estate now almost 40 years and I can tell you that's absolutely mathematically correct. You know, that we make business decisions on locating businesses based on traffic and access. You know, we heard the phrase, location, location, location. And, you know, I am 100% in favor of figuring out a way to beautify West Broadway. You know, I'm, I think that's great, but I think by putting the mediums in and you're limiting access to various businesses, again, as was mentioned earlier, you're picking and choosing which businesses are gonna thrive and which ones aren't. You're also, the investors that own those buildings are gonna be affected by the values of those buildings because of that same reason. You know, I represent clients up and down Broadway that have vacant buildings. And Nate, you know, I can tell you, you know, I have people call my office every single day. I've never once had somebody tell me they don't want to be on Broadway because of the way it looks.
Why do they go to West, why do they go to West Omaha and Lincoln but not West Broadway and Council Bluffs? Including it right in, right out. I see it every day at my work in Lincoln. There's, there's some quite, some quite good establishments and very significantly, far more than we're proposing, that we can't seem to attract to Council Bluffs or certainly not on the western half of it.
I can tell you, most, most recently, you know, we, John Jerkovich and I have been working very hard on trying to lease, an example would be a location that used to be Blockbuster. And we've had some really good clients from Omaha and the regional area that some national tenants that want to be in that location. When they find out that they're, that they're paying $12 a square foot rent, they're saying, great, $12 a square foot rent, but they're paying $7 a square foot property taxes.
By the region, $20 a square foot is.
We're done, we're gone. You know, and I think that's a bigger problem, it needs to be addressed than anything.
We don't control that piece.
I know you don't control that, but, but somehow that needs to be figured out.
It does help that we're, you know, seven or eight bucks a foot cheaper than Lincoln, for example. It's $20 a square foot for retail in downtown Lincoln.
Depends where you go. There's, there's.
I want to be one of the best areas.
$20, $24 a square foot, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we're never going to get to that if we keep to what we've got.
I, I don't disagree that improvements required.
Yeah.
You know, I just think that the mediums need to be thought through very carefully so that you're not damaging existing businesses. And the last point I want to make, then I'll go sit down, is you, we got this information, I got this information from my client who got it from Roger today. And I know there's been efforts and you talk about Facebook pages and emails and all that stuff.
Door to door.
Posted, posted mail.
Door to door.
Door to door.
Well, my client, I can honestly tell you, heard about it for the first time today.
Not, not due to any diligence on it, lack of due diligence on our part.
We don't know who gets their mail, right? So, you know.
Only so much we can do.
That is actually possible, but you do realize that we had people going door to door. We had people. Posted, posted. Did you get anything in the mail? Not one thing in the mail. Well, we use the mailing addresses. The mailings were sent. So I would just tell you, I get things in the mail sometimes. I don't realize what it is. Maybe you didn't get one, but, but they did go out to all the addresses in the affected area. So it was on the front page of the newspaper, Jim, and I know, I know you read the newspaper.
I have not read the Nonparel in about four years.
Well, there's only so much we can do.
I work in the Nonparel building.
I would say to you, Jim, that my frustration isn't, these are the, this is the feedback we were asking for, right? This is the feedback.
Couple of years ago.
That have, I have asked for over a year to get. This is the feedback we expected to get at the public meetings. The emails we expected to get when we asked you either to drop in the comments in the box or to email back, these were the comments we asked for. So, you know, I cannot understand how, Jim, you're a commercial real estate broker, this is on the front page of the city website, it was on the front page of the Nonparel, it's been everywhere. So I don't feel like that it's right to almost seem accusatory that people didn't know until Roger went out today. That, that's very unfair considering what I know to be. I can't tell you how much money I lose in my business every day, making sure that I'm at all these things so that I know what's going on.
I do that too. I didn't work at all today.
This is very.
Come on.
This is very frustrating, though. I'm not frustrated at the business owners. I'm frustrated that this is exactly what I've asked for. This is exactly what the city has asked for. That's exactly how a lot of these changes got made in the very first place, was because of public input. And I have no frustration tonight with getting this information now. What I have a frustration with is people saying that they had literally no idea when it's their business, this is what they do for a living. And, and saying it in such a tone is almost that somebody didn't do their job. Well, I can tell you, there, I don't know any other way to reach out. If you reach out by social media, newspaper, local news stations, mailings.
Door to door.
Door to door. There's really not much else. There's really not much else.
The dragging folks, I suppose.
I can't answer for everybody in this room. I know most of these business owners probably very, spend very little time doing anything but running their business.
Well, then, then there's consequences. There, there are consequences to neglecting one's duties.
It is awkward, Jim, and I under.
That's exactly why we're here tonight.
Right, and, and I do appreciate that. I just want to be very clear, though, for those that believe that the city was trying to sneak this past, couldn't be further from the truth. This could not have been more public. It has been completely over the top. As transparent as you could be. There were a lot more medians that went away. And I know that the people here tonight, most of the people here tonight are here because this affects their business directly with median, and I 100% get that, I really do. But I also think that if you had talked to some of the other business owners that are being affected, that want the medians because they have different reasons for wanting them. It, I understand that this room tonight doesn't want them, but the people that came to the meetings and expressed that they did want them, they count too.
That and they showed up at the time in the neighborhoods and we crafted a major compromise. Getting rid of the trees was a major compromise. Getting rid of most of the median, the vast majority of it by, by linear feet, occurred due to that compromise by the people who showed up. In our democracy, you have to show up. And you can choose not to, it's a free country, but then when you don't and your voice isn't heard, it's very difficult for me then to take, take that with a.
Sir, sir, if you want to address the council, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, but you can't holler from the crowd.
So ultimately, it comes down to a compromise that's been built over much time. And again, this is just the beginning plan. So you'll have plenty of time, I hope now, to see you in this process at the meetings or to reach out to us. So you'll have plenty of time, I hope now, to see you in this process at the meetings or to reach out to us. None of you have reached out to me. Not one that's in this room that, so, you know. So if, if you want to influence the process, you have to talk to me. You have to show up. I realize we all have businesses. I have a day job too. We all are up here as community service and it costs us money. We're not making money doing this. We're community servants. You, you have to contact us and be part of the process because after we've gone through this compromise with so many groups who did join the compre- compromise, I'm not going to, at the last minute, for anybody torpedo it.
Okay, I really don't have anything else.
Jim, what'd you say?
I'd be interested in hearing-
Roger has a question for you.
I'd be interested in hearing if there's anybody here that's actually was the, involved in that compromise. Because I'd like to hear that side of the story.
If they didn't show up, it's their fault, not mine, sir.
Okay, I understand.
You know, Jeff was there and, and I represented Jeff's thoughts this afternoon, but Roger does have a question for you.
So you've been in commercial, I asked Sharon this because she's in the real estate business too, and I don't, I'm not at all. But you've been in commercial, she said she's not in commercial real estate, so it's a little bit different. You've been in commercial real estate for almost forty years, you said?
Correct.
Do you, would you say that having one entrance or not being able to have a median in front of your business, would that devalue the property?
Yes. Access is an important part of value.
What are the other parts of value, sir?
Location, the traffic.
Also-
Zoning.
So there are a lot of factors that go into the valuation of a business, not just whether-
Already got the zoning. You know, that's in place, has been and works well.
Well, that'll change continuously, of course, as time goes on.
Yeah, to a degree, yes.
Yeah, indeed, indeed.
You know, the, the demographics are the demographics, you know, they're, they are what they are.
And by that, you mean who's living there and how much money they've got?
Correct.
Okay. Just so folks, if they don't understand that term.
The traffic count is, is critical. As Mr. Ballinger said, you know, if you have an intersection that's got twenty thousand cars a day going by and you put a medium up that cuts that to ten thousand, you know, that's a direct impact to the accessibility of that property and value.
Would it also factor, would it not factor in the fact that an opening of Avenue A is a two, two-way and other, other remediation steps taken remediate some of the loss in value that you envisioned due to, due to, due to the presence of a median?
It depends. I know in the case of my client on the China Walk, it's in the middle of the block, it would not affect it. It would, if you're on a corner, probably would help.
Yeah. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Sharon, can you, can you get me the names of the businesses? Because like Jim said, I, I would like to know the other side as to why they-
Actually, what you can do is that, go to Public Works and also you can check with the engineering firm because they run the website and the website has all the businesses that were there that night. They have all of the comments, the written comments, the emailed comments. There's an off-
And Public Works will have a lot?
Public Works, and they may send you over to the engineering firm because they have some PR people that were in charge. I mean, they're actually engineers, but they were in charge of making sure that all of the emails were responded to, people's concerns were met.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I truly want to know the other side because as, as I've stated publicly, I, I don't think there should be medians at all, but obviously somebody does, so I'd like to, I'd like to know that side because I haven't heard that side either.
And that was the public meeting at TJ High School.
I think you'll hear what, synopsis of what I've said, but I appreciate you'd want to hear the original source. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And then-
There's one at City Hall too, I think, that we had taken comments on.
There's, there were several, but the nice part is we have a written record.
Yeah, we keep a record of that.
Another thing that's just been on my brain a little bit, and we had executive session, so I wasn't able to talk to, to Bob Mont with the Chamber, but I'm sure some of you businesses are members with the Chamber. I know Jeff, you're even on the board. I think the Chamber should have been involved in reaching out to you businesses as well. The ones that aren't, that are members and potentially some that aren't. Probably all of them. So I'm, I'm going to have that conversation as well. I think that's a big part of, they could help that situation. I think that's what they're there for. So I, I will have that conversation as well. I don't know if any, anybody else thinks that they're part of their role or not.
It's, this, this is a classic example, a, this classic example in political science of all the different, all the different possible affected constituencies and how they all each have their voice, whether they choose to exercise it or not. But yeah, things, things happen due to folks showing up and being part of the, the process and nobody wins a hundred percent of whatever they want. And I don't think I'm telling anybody anything they don't know. But, you know, I, there, there has been a, a genuine attempt at a compromise. Is it perfect? No, I don't completely like it. I don't know anyone who completely likes it, which is why I think it's probably right.
So I'm going to recap here and hopefully we can move forward. Didn't sound like anybody else want to address the council. This is the corridor master plan. It's considered a concept to date. It will change. It can change. I won't say it will change, it can change. The intent is to contact people in each segment as they do the segments, talk to them about opportunities to, in some cases, close multiple accesses and limit the accesses to Broadway for safety purposes. In some cases, if Iowa West is willing to fund it, offer them an opportunity to landscape the front of their business, to beautify it. In some cases, if budget allows, to put monument signs to beautify their business if they currently have a pole sign. But the key word in there is concept and it, and it is not finalized. This council was assured today if a property owner objects to the plan, if they don't sign up for, the plan is proposed for their business, that this board would have the final say on, on what does happen. And so there is a due diligence process that would allow you to have a future say. I've talked to Jeff and I've talked to Matt. I understand their concerns. I'll represent those, but, but don't rely on me keeping the fight because I think some of what you have to say is, is pretty valid stuff, so. And that said, we're going to, do we have a motion and?
We do. We have a motion in a second.
I believe so.
And so it's time to take a vote if nobody else has anything else to say.
Yes, I, I did have some, some additional discussion on this. And, and I think it's, it's important to, to kind of keep the, a large perspective on this in that everybody agrees that West Broadway needs to be improved. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a no-brainer and, and I don't know anybody disagrees with that. But as they say, the, the devil's always in, in the details. And, and a lot of the, a lot of the devil, as, as I referred to before, some of the, the aspects that I thought were, were not very good have been removed. But, but there's still some other things, obviously, that, that are a matter of concern. It, it's absolutely important for, for the city that we keep this important development project on track. And this is, this is a key milestone to helping to get that done. Having said that, the vote tonight doesn't, as the mayor suggested, doesn't lock in the, the process or lock in final decisions. For, for each segment of the construction process, West Broadway is a, a long, long corridor. For, for each segment, there will, there will have to be detailed plans and specifications drawn up. And they're going to have to come to us in order to approve those, those plans and specifications as well as the financial aspect. And I can tell you right now, and I'm going to say this as plainly as I, as I know how, while I support this corridor plan, I share Roger's concern about small businesses and the impact. And we can make West Broadway corridor as spiffy and cool and as inviting as we want to, but if we end up with a whole lot of new, newer businesses or even not so new businesses, more of them being shuttered up, then it's not going to make it a cool, hip, happening place to go visit. It's just going to be an improved area of, that, that needs a lot of help. And that's, that's not going to benefit anybody. So, so that's why as we move forward on this, I assure your concern, Roger, you know, that, that we're told that these sorts of things are a goal. It's a framework. You know, all this stuff is, is subject to, to change. Well, okay, I, I, I've heard that and sometimes I've been very disappointed by that when, when the business comes down the pike, the, on the other end. But I'm here to tell you that if, if they want individual segments of this project to continue to move forward, we're going to have to come to some sort of, of understanding with the small business owners as well as the, the residents. And, and I think that, again, kudos, kudos to all of you and to the, to the public participation. You guys have identified one of the main sticking points that people have, have focused on all along and that's what, what, what's, what are these medians going to look like? How much are they going to cost? Who are they going to impact? And we see that that has raised back up again and good on y'all. So while I'm supportive of, of this framework or this goal, we have to be very careful moving forward and, and, and I'm going to share Roger's perspective on this and I'm going to be very interested in, in how all of you are, are impacted.
Anybody else from the council? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign?
Aye.
I'm going to give you a business card so that they make sure they follow up with you. I'm giving you my business card. If they don't follow up with you, I want you to call me.
Resolution sixteen dash two sixty, authorizing execution of an engagement agreement with bond counsel for the twenty sixteen A and twenty sixteen B bond issues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.